I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to call off five C.
Is there a second? All those in favor? It's now a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion without five C.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Dr. Sanquini?
First, health action, medical needs, a teacher at Tiverton Middle School with tomorrow, their designation basketball coach at Tiverton Middle School with Colin Phillips, their designation for part-time library teaching at high school in Mathis County. On the volunteer through supervisor, the higher education club advisors, there's two of them, Tiverton High School, Carrie Lloyd and Stacy Elkin, and working in higher-
Track and field.
Our volunteer position for the high school at Grace Jones.
Okay, and before we go further to housekeeping items, we skipped open forum. Is there anyone signed up for open forum? Okay, thank you. And our report out from executive session, there was discussion of NEA Tiverton collective bargaining, no votes were taken. And under correspondence, we did receive a letter from NEA Rhode Island requesting records. Number eight A, all this- five C. Oh, yep, sorry. Do you have a motion to approve five C?
Did you want to talk about it, Daniel?
I pulled it with the intention of abstaining.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so we just need another motion to approve five C.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll second. All those in favor? Abstentions? Okay. Item eight A, update on construction. Mr. Mendes, you're gonna lead us here?
How are we doing, everybody, tonight? Good evening. Construction going on as planned. We got most of the roof here almost done. There's one area that will be finished off tomorrow morning on the ephesus, which is the white part of the building above the brick. And then it'll be just finishing off the cap on the roof. Ceiling tiles are going on our first floor. They were probably about ninety percent done, ninety-five percent done on the first, on the ground level here. That's halls, classrooms, everything. There's storage areas that will be worked out later on, but doesn't, it won't interfere with instructional aspects of anything in the building. We just got, we personally have to move stuff out so they can put the track in, put tile in, lights, all that stuff. So we've got to maneuver a lot of things around and out, storage rooms downstairs. Middle school, the first floor is just about all done with the ceiling, new ceiling tiles, and they're working on the second floor now. It looks like they will be on, on schedule to completion of the job.
Great, thank you.
Any questions?
Just one, to confirm the heating systems are plugged in and ready to-
Yeah, working on the heating systems now.
Okay.
They will be ready for us within the next two weeks.
I know this week it shouldn't be an issue.
I don't think the next couple of weeks will be an issue.
Okay.
But again, they remain on schedule with the heating. So the whole project remains on schedule, and unless something changed at this afternoon's budget, actually under budget, so.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. The building committee is doing a great job, and we hope people will give them a talk. Thank you.
Okay. Item eight B, FY nineteen Perkins grant update. Ms. Farr?
We were requested to know what, if we have received the Perkins grant, and we have currently for FY nineteen, we have eighteen thousand eight hundred and one dollars, and that is going to be basically for the allocation based on part-time school-based coordinator. Mr. Sanquini is working with the Newport Association to see if there can be additional funds obtained for that as well.
Yes, Mrs. Black?
Okay, so, the reason I keep asking for this is because when you're first elected, you have to choose what you're going to do, and some take city game, and some take policy. And back in the day, fourteen years ago, it was motivation education, now it's career tech. Very excited on what's going on in the state. What we've received so far from Perkins, another grant, is over almost two hundred thousand dollars. And that's for the engineering, computers, robotics, there's laptops, there's, I'll say the school dollar that is consumable, or we write a grant when it's consumable, if you need ten stores and fifteen pieces, you have to write all that down. And then the process is you draw, get it, then you submit it to them, you have to defend why you need it, they kind of give you what the school is going to, and then for the next year, you have to go down there, fight for it, and you go down to EBITDA, and we get it, and sell it. There's a CNC machine down there, there's a laser array, it's amazing, every once you go down and see, the equipment that we have, we're beyond any other school. The other schools were all just looking into this because they didn't continue with it about ten years. All these years, I remember, it's going to AP honors, and we're going to get the top of, and they were saying, no, we're not something for everyone. We kept that program, I'm so happy. We kept the carpentry, and we brought in a manager, project leader, and we have it coming out. And this, this is Spocky here, and he's there for anti-prevention, but that sign right there was made by the art teacher and the art students. And what we did in our last contract, that we already signed, is in order to have this school with Perkins, we thought we better not use it, and to protect the cops, so that we're all together, and that's just the alphabet on the side, so it's a safe environment. So, it's really, we have a good one, and we're going to do it.
Or the Asian accent.
Oh, he'll talk about that, I think, I'll be there. But that's why we have to keep our eyes on this, and make sure we get that to the state, and make sure we're performing everything it's supposed to do, that we have the record. Some of the great things we wanted to get, the work this morning, we don't want to lose these programs, because we can actually tuition students in, and we also get money from the state, and we just try to let them have Perkins. And most importantly, we have to get prevention, because we know it's not every house running with any of this prevention, we want to talk about that. So this is why it's so exciting to have this school, and make it everyone's school. And we called seven of the White House, and we said, make sure you vote for that, move that, because all the families are willing. And I said, we may be doing this house, you're going to build your house yourself, or you're going to call the desk, you're going to call Mr. Ness, and he's going to build it, you can run it out, I'm on water. And then when you have a big party, and it's Saturday, this is the one, who's going to call that time, it's going to be one year. Everybody has a, first, have a good job, and it works for the effort, so that's very exciting, but don't be able to go in the business of that sort of thing.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Black. Where are you going?
You're my boss.
You said you were going. Well, all these people-
No, I said, people that are doing those jobs, helping them, helping the families, and everything, and they want to be tied with them, I mean-
Okay. Item eight B, update on career technical education. Mr. Ashley?
Thank you. So, an overview of what our current programs are and what we're looking forward or ahead to for CTE programs. We currently have two RIDE-approved CTE programs at Tiverton High School. First, on the left, is the Engineering Academy. This is also known as our Project Lead the Way, what Ms. Black was just talking about with the equipment. We updated our space downstairs, and it consists of three courses. The first is number one, the Introduction to Engineering, the Principles of Engineering, and then the Computer Integrated Manufacturing. And we currently have between all of those courses thirty-two students enrolled. And then the second, which was more recently approved as a full accredited program, is our Carpentry Technologies. Also, three courses, starting with, we'll frequently refer to it as our Tech 700 Intro Course. Then it goes into a Woods One and Two. Together, they make up one full-year course. And then lastly, our Wood and Marine Technology Program. This is sometimes also referred to as our Boat Building Program, but it does consist of more than just building boats, but that is a key component. And currently, we have eighty-six students, actually, amongst all of those three courses, enrolled in the Carpentry Technologies Program. So, a few updates to both programs. Last year, so through Project Lead the Way, because that's a nationally adopted curriculum, if students participate in all three of those courses that I mentioned in the Engineering Pathway, then there is essentially a, similar to like an AP exam, but through Project Lead the Way, an Engineering Exam, that's quite rigorous, and if the student is proficient or advanced, through the Rochester Institute of Technology can potentially earn college credit. And so we were happy to report that five students last year earned a proficient or advanced status on that final exam to have the potential to earn that credit. We also just, last Friday, where Ms. Black talked about the process to get the equipment, but we finally actually got, on campus, our laser engraver. It's quite an expensive piece of equipment, and so our teachers took the day, actually, to just learn that piece of equipment. And that is similar to what manufacturers will use in terms of actually designing and then literally cutting out a custom-made piece of equipment that could be used in a manufacturing process. In our Carpentry Technologies, we're happy to report last year, the installation of two Safe Stop saws. So if you look on YouTube, these are the videos that if you have potentially a piece of skin or someone that's close to it, the saw automatically stops. And we're also just recently, this year, pulled the recommendation from the Board of Trustees, going to be in transition to update our curriculum to the Home Builders Institute, or HBI, curriculum. And so we've started that conversation with the instructor of the Carpentry Technologies and the department chair to make that transition. You can see next here, this is just a couple photos of students in the Carpentry Technologies Program. These are the kayaks that they made from scratch. This is, you're looking at some of the impressive work that they do. I don't have a picture of the engineering pathways, but you can imagine something similar, but with robotics instead of the wooden boats. So a few additional updates. So we're happy to report that we're looking to expand both of these programs and create new programs, and a key component of that is connecting with local businesses in the area. And through our Carpentry Technologies Program, we've started a relationship with the five businesses listed there. And these are just, right now, relationships that we can provide to our students in the programs to go to these businesses, learn more about what it's like in the actual workplace. And in some cases, these employers are potentially looking at some of our students to have potential future employment shortly, shortly after graduation. And so we talked about the Perkins money. Also, we're looking to use that money to provide additional upgrades specifically to the Carpentry Technologies Program. We talked about the laser engraver we got for the engineering. Now we're looking to make additional upgrades to the Carpentry Technologies Program. So, looking ahead, like I said, we're looking to strengthen our existing CTE, but then expand into new, new pathways. And so a few areas we're looking at are cybersecurity, and that's linked to our Computer Science Program. We've heard some feedback from parents and students about a business, we're calling, we've reached out to an incubator, a consultant that helps schools create a new business course, so that's one option. And then we're also looking at expanding the robotics, and specifically looking at drone technology, and seeing if that is a new course we could potentially offer to students as early as next year. And there's two potential pathways we're looking at. And CTE is what we're talking about here, where we get money through the state if we get approved. But the other is a pathway endorsed council designation, so you don't have the money necessarily associated with this, but this is another state-approved pathway that Tiverton High School could have our students go through and then get that designation actually on their diploma. And so again, I just list, for CTE, it's a three-course sequence, similar to what I described, and the pathways designation is similar, three courses. But in both cases, what we're looking at, push, I mentioned that, local business involvement, but the real direct experience in the workplace, either through an internship, field trips, or some other possibility. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions from the-
Please.
Is this on? Yeah. How do you, what goes into the thought process of determining future pathways?
Conversation, it starts with conversations. This is currently where we are right now, so with really all stakeholders. So we've been chatting with students, teachers, parents, community members. And so last spring, actually, there was a small team of teachers and myself that went to a statewide kind of workshop with area high schools in Rhode Island to just talk about, if we wanted to create a new pathway, what, A, what might that even look like? How would we go about doing it? What are other schools doing? And so in that case, we looked at one example, where a school created a video and marketing pathway that was unique to that particular community. That was one area. And so we started that conversation there, and we actually scheduled a meeting for later this month to have that consultant come to Tiverton High School to continue that conversation around future pathways. It's something, again, we are committed to. We know, we want to increase the options and the pathways for our students. We know we can't do everything, but in, I host a monthly open session for parents, and I've opened it up for them, and I've heard a little bit about what I just talked about in terms of the business-oriented and the computer sciences or cybersecurity, really, along with the robotics. These were all areas that parents thought that not only are emerging fields beyond the high school level, but just inherently of value to our students.
I think there's so many options out there, too.
Yeah.
So many come to mind, and I won't start spitting them out because it's not my role, but I do see a number of schools going in several different directions at the same time in order to be able to capture as much of the, the student body as possible.
Yeah.
And I certainly would like to see us going in that type of a direction, and making sure that we're not just serving a narrow scope of students, but rather a wider swath. So I'll leave it to you to-
Yeah.
-work toward that.
Agreed, that as a comprehensive high school, we want to have as many different options, again, getting at what Ms. Black was talking about.
I mean, I'm thinking healthcare, I'm thinking data, I'm thinking, there are just so many hot topics, hot industries, hot areas nowadays, that you just wonder, I just do wonder how we're approaching this. Is it methodically? Is it simply through opportunities as they arise, or what? But thank you for pointing out what we have, at least at this point.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could I just?
Yep.
So, the process was a long, tedious one, a long, and then we had the high-stakes exit test, and we had to test it by the Senate, and I put it up to the State House, so they didn't want to have that. So then they said, well, what else can we add? So this is what happened. We decided, after a few years, we need to do the high-class jobs, the high-class jobs, that's what I was talking about. And then they decided we'd have to stop the endorsements, and there are some, there are some people that, and they had these, and everything else, but it was a long, complicated process. And I think it was unfortunate, as the state, that they're doing this option, and the student can't make that cuts law on the S and Ts, there's other ways, but they have to be real. The state just didn't want to, the state, yes, no, like, it's a few more, see, why it's a half, a half, and if you're willing to, and you're willing to, it's not going to be a real, it's, 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 it's,
subcommittee that was derived thought of ways that we could do things specifically in the realm of communication that would assist the, sorry, I was talking too closely, that could assist the communications between parents, between school committee members, between principals, so on and so forth. So, that said, the communication plan was born. And roughly to my findings, it looks like it was right around August of 2016 when it started to timeline itself. So our committee members, our subcommittee members, saw certain things that needed to be done and put a timeline together. It is available on our website. That said, goal number three, specifically relevant to tonight, was establish a clear district identity through a unified approach to communications. This approach will be proactive, engaging, and professional. So I've been working on this since the moment I arrived in this position, and through a labor of love, I developed what's known as the style guide. This is, in the business world, is very common, where businesses or marketing departments in particular vote and work on specific fonts and things like that, the image that you project to your outside world, whether it be your internal customers or your external customers. So, that said, the copy that you received gives an opportunity to be finite so we can declare how the district suggests, and that's an operative word there, suggest how you would write things like AM and PM versus all the way up to our actual logo. So if you can look here with the brand variations when I arrived here, there's a significant amount of differences. And one of the things that I did as a subject matter expert of marketing, and most importantly, of things that have to do with branding, is I looked long and hard at our history, and I looked long and hard at the image that we project. And based on our reputation or our impression into the public, I asked a significant amount of stakeholders what they thought of the multiple amounts of logos. And they all agreed that it is confusing. It can be very confusing to receive variations of different logos from principals, and I'll use myself as an example. When I'd receive a letter from the middle school, you know, there would be a significant amount of difference with the letterhead from when I would see, receive something as a parent from Pecasset. So it was just a, an opportunity for us to really kind of be an umbrella, an umbrella logo or an umbrella brand image across all five schools, and to allow us to be, have more continuity, and most importantly, have that cohesive look as a district instead of five islands, as I like to say. So without further ado, the look was our Tiverton logo. So this logo will be something that projects with a more modern look, and the JPEGs that are out there, that are, some of them are even actual pictures of the building, and then they're shrunk down. And so this is really kind of insight with where if athletics or groups preferred to create clothing or images, it's just more cohesive and can meet speculations that these vendors require. Lastly, just to kind of give like a Coca-Cola for an example, or a Macintosh, or an Apple, you know, they change their logo at least once every 10 years. So to the best of my history digging, it sounds to me like we haven't had a cohesive brand for the entire district. We've just had brands at the school level. So this would be something that wouldn't, you know, change the face of Tiverton. It was the moreover objective for this particular logo is to keep our communications as official schools with coherency, and most importantly, an up-to-date and more reflective image of the times. And without further ado, I'd love to take questions, if you have any.
So this is just, I'm sorry. So, so this is just, a letterhead will all have this, for instance, just so everyone in the district, District K through 12, it's like everyone's using the same letterhead, that like, that's the thought process.
Precisely. So if you think of a student who is applying for college and maybe has a letter of recommendation, and, and again, I don't certainly mean to insult anyone, but if that person consists of a letterhead with a cartoon figure on it, you know, that can tend to reflect differently than what the student would want. So it's, it's an intention of just keeping up with the times.
Okay. Julie, I just want to say I've had the opportunity to read through this a few times, and, you know, I do appreciate the effort to kind of bring a cohesive look to, to our quote-unquote "brand" to know that we are all part of the Tiverton School District. That's first and foremost. While we all have our individual identities from within those, this district, the district itself is, you know, I think the T is a great, just a great thing. Simple, clean, and we go on. Thank you for the work you put into this.
Thank you. My pleasure. It truly is my pleasure.
Yeah. I guess I, I do like and I appreciate all the work you've done. I think would be a good idea still for the communication committee, when we, we haven't met in actually several months, to, what I would not want to lose, though, is the actual, the specific identity that each school has.
Right.
Because I think they all sort of have a unique character based on, you know, so the communities that surround and sort of cocoon those schools, as well as sort of when you, when you're getting into the middle school and high school, sort of the age that those kids are, and sort of the, you know, recognizing that they have a very different developmental trajectory at each different, in each different year. So I think it'd be a good idea for us to continue to that discussion and take that up at some point.
Well, yeah, that's like, what is next steps?
So I would suggest that the, the communications subcommittee really meets on the communication plan that this was kind of derived from, and we go from there, and just simply look at what the goals were planted out from 2015 until 2020, see where we are, and see where we need to go.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Okay. So I'm going to ask the committee to return to item 9A. I would like to ask for a formal vote to approve the proposal to NEA Tiverton, given the discussion and pending final language as drafted by the superintendent and the NEA leadership. So I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you very much. Item 9E, aged technology items to be recycled. Mr. Cannavale?
Good evening, everybody. So in the backup, I sent over an inventory of what we would like to recycle. It is mostly obsolete computers that we have. The computers that we are recycling do not have any memory or hard drives, so none of our information does get sent out. We do destroy the hard drives differently. And there are a lot of aged televisions, printers that no longer work. Most of the stuff that you see in there, there is really no salvage value for it, and we couldn't really sell it to anyone. The recycling company comes and picks up the inventory from here, and it's at no cost to the district.
Can I have a motion to approve that? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Just one question. So none of this equipment is even worth giving away?
No. No, most of the stuff is at least like 13, 14 years old.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, and we are on to item 9F, review approval of parent organization registration form, Tiverton Middle School, Ms. Sherman?
Hi, Jocelyn Sherman. I have, oh, thank you. Okay. Two daughters at the middle school, and coming here tonight to get official approval for a PTO organization at the middle school.
Can I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Any other, any discussion?
You don't want to take us through the...
Do you want to go through all the bylaws? We can stay late tonight.
No, but I do appreciate the effort, and I don't want to just glance over it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
No, I do think you're the first new group that has actually used this form that was developed, so it's nice to see it being used. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 9G, request approval for new club Save the Oceans, Tiverton High School. Mr. Ashley?
Yes. Please to present before the committee a request for a new club called Save the Oceans Club, initiated by one of our students who was motivated on her own accord to try to take action and recognize that our waters are polluted and need some help, and so wants to do what she can as a member of this community to support that effort.
And, oh, yeah, we do, we have a volunteer advisor.
We do, yes. One of our faculty has agreed to sign us as a volunteer advisor.
Make that motion.
I'll second. Any other discussion? Questions? All those in favor?
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving like a locomotive. Item 9H, public request, records request. Dr. Sanghioni?
Just want to make the committee aware...
The committee aware that we received a public records request from NEA Rhode Island. It's a pretty comprehensive list, but I'm working with our attorney to make sure we meet the guidelines and the law to make sure these, what we can provide will be provided in a timely fashion.
Okay, thank you.
Within 10 days, right?
I think it's...
10 days or, right, there's an or.
10 days, or you can, if you need more time.
Right. Say, I need more time.
Okay.
Okay. Item 10, announcements, scheduled meetings, reports. Yep, yep.
So, as I said before, the Santa Bulleye Mark and Spock family, an active performing act of Bill Steiners to be, we had a very busy weekend, spent the day at middle school that day, and they actually tried to give us a cheer. So when I was talking to someone about it, I said, I didn't think we were supposed to do that anymore, like, if you can, and first of all, I have a kid, so they asked us to send a message to them here. And then it came to the town council that night, and the council was absent, so they sat in their seat, and they sat Sparky at the table. And they gave him a soda, that he knew, because of health and love, that he can't pick a soda. So anyways, Sparky sat very busy, just happy to be here that night. He had his famous shirt, named Stampa on, and he got the award for a high school gift, so, so we're very proud of him to join us. Everything we go to, we do it this morning, to our healthy breakfast, and they're talking about social motion learning, and about controlling, Tiverton's been doing it for a long time. We had that whole day, and it's, April Friends Day, it's every, Food Day, and they play all the, I mean, all the songs. It's just a beautiful thing that we join this, just so proud of them. And the other thing is, I know to the Senate Forum on Education, the annual Senate forum, and actually Senator DePamme and Liza Lawson were on the panel, two lots of people from town, you know, on the Senate. So it was, it was really good. It's good for us to be there, to be there and see us, and appreciate everything they're doing, and so also appreciate it. So, we try to, all of you, we can, you know, get it on to them.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Black.
Do you need a little extra chair?
I don't think we do need to have a meeting. Do you think we need to have a meeting?
Or we'll schedule something.
Well, yeah, I think we're okay on sort of following our calendar at this point. All right, last one, a motion to adjourn? Is that you? All those in favor?